We are reconvening the committee. Okay, we're reconvening the committee on the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees. Okay, at this time, we're going to be recognizing the Chair on the Committee on Budget and Finance to read the next motion for this agenda.
First of all, aloha, everyone. Chair, I would like to request for approval to waive the following BF Committee matters to be directly considered by the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees Bylaws Article V one one eight, Section M, the Committee on Budget and Finance Action Item BF Number twenty-five dash twenty-two, Approval of OHA Funding for Event Sponsorship to the Merry Monarch Festival for the twenty twenty-five Merry Monarch Festival on April twenty, twenty twenty-five to April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Again, members, this is to vote on the waiver, right? And then we will take up the actual action. We do need six votes for the waiver to pass. And so I want to be mindful of our other two trustees. But we can do discussion. Trustee Akaka?
I will, I will vote yes, but like I had mentioned in the previous waiver, that vote that I would prefer that we not have it where we're rushed like this. But because there's an, due to the interest of time and nearness to this
Event.
Very large event, I see the urgency of it. However, I would prefer we not have to be going in a process like this, but we normally go through the committee and then to the board opportunities, so we can give opportunity for beneficiaries to give manao as well, as well as for us as a board to be able to go through the motions.
Yep, absolutely agree. Okay, call for the question.
Trustee Ahuna.
Sorry, I was just trying to understand the waiver. We voting to pass the?
Yeah, Trustee Ahuna, we're gonna vote for the waiver. And then once the waiver is done, then we'll vote on the actual action item motion.
And when you guys talk about the waiver, what are we talking about?
The waiver is because the, the item did not be agendized and voted on through the Budget and Finance Committee due to last week's operational issues and.
Got it, got it, got it, Chair. Yes, all the way.
Yes, thank you.
Mahalo. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Waehe. Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes for the waiver.
Okay, now we can go right into the motion. Yeah?
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Kaheli. I move to approve and authorize FY twenty-five, twenty twenty-five sponsorship funding for the Merry Monarch Festival for the twenty twenty-five Merry Monarch Festival on April twenty, twenty through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
Yes, we have Kathy and Auntie Luana online.
All right, well, the Chair recognizes now Auntie Luana Kavelu and her daughter Kathy Kavelu live and direct from Hilo, Hawaii. Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha, everybody. Hi, Auntie Hulu.
Kathy.
Hi, hi, Dantu.
How you, Auntie?
Oh, going pule already. Um, I really would like, thank you, Kai, for sitting down with us and meeting. And I would like to let that person know, you know, when Kai talked to us, part of the delay was my fault, because like I used to tell Auntie Hulu, I don't want to take money just for the sake of taking money. I have to have a purpose. And so I wanted to share with you folks that normally, so many, we have so many volunteers, yeah? Like, as an example, the Pa'ou, the Pa'ou people have to organize their meat for months ahead of time. They do it all for the love of what they do to deal with the horses and the Pa'ou people. But we don't give them anything. I give the individual units five hundred dollars. That is really manini, yeah? Because as you folks know, just the flowers alone is so expensive for all those horse lays. Plus, to rent a horse is nine hundred dollars per horse. So they fundraise on their own, because they love to be part of the parade and do, you know, to be part of us, to celebrate hula, to celebrate the tradition of being Pa'ou. So I thought, you know, maybe we can help them as well with this money coming from you folks. So that's just an example of what we plan to do with it. But I want to thank you folks for even considering us for this event, to give us money. We really appreciate you folks thinking about us. Thank you, thank you so much.
Mahalo, Auntie Luana, for joining us. Trustees, trustee Chair Emerita Lindsay, you're recognized.
Luana and Kathy, mahalo nuu, for all you folks to, I mean, this is the biggest event statewide every year, and we respect all the work that you folks do with the kumu hula, with the parade, with the vendors. So maika'i. Thank you, thank you so much. And I'll see you on Wednesday.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, Auntie Hulu.
Any other trustees?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I want to mahalo you both for the decades and generational kuliana that you take on in doing, doing all this. And my, my mother was, she performed in the Merry Monarch at, at a time in which you had to ask people to come. So how, how times have changed, yeah? And in terms of you joining us, mahalo for doing so. I, I, I believe it's more on our end at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We're trying to figure out a process that is pa'a on both ends, so that we can be supporting our culture and so that we can kokua one another in, in our event sponsorship. So mahalo for joining us today to be able to be available for any manao between both parties.
Thank you. You know, oh, Brick would wait. I wanted to tell you that she said she thanked us for continuing this thing on, but I have to be very honest. Every Sunday after Merry Monarch, I tell Kathy, I quit. So, you know, it's, it's my mother's legacy that I want to keep on going. And you are right, Trustee Akaka, we had a hard time to sell ribbons for a dollar before. So we split, if a group wanted to help us sell, they take fifty cents, we take fifty cents. But it was a struggle before, yeah? So right now, people love the hula. We have to turn people away. But it's groups like you folks that want to help us, that help us keep the price of tickets down. I think the Merry Monarch tickets are best deal around the state. The most expensive is fifty-five dollars for one person to come all three nights. So in order for us to keep the tickets down, it's grants like you folks are giving us that allows us to do so. So mahalo nuu, really, we really appreciate all you folks, your generosity, yeah? Thank you.
Chair Galutera?
Yeah, I just wanted to say aloha to Luana and Kathy. As I recall, the last thing you told me, Luana, last time was trawee. So I would trawee. Have a good time now, okay? Aloha you.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aloha, Auntie Luana, Kathy, and especially give mahalo to my boy Albert, to tell him I said hi. But I, I just wanted to thank you for all the amazing things that you have done, Auntie Luana. When, whenever I hear Merry Monarch, I always gotta hear Auntie Luana Kavelu. So thank you for all the things you do, the wonderful things. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm learning that, you know, it started off rough, but it's hard to imagine today, you know? I mean, people trying to get tickets. And thank you for keeping it, you know, much less than, you know, going to Disneyland or anything like that, man. It's crazy. But anyway, thank you so much, Auntie. And I can't wait to see you and your family.
You're welcome, Dantu. And you know, you'll get to see my son Albert, your friend. He, he's assigned to take care of the Pukinla, you know, and that's part of volunteering. The whole family gotta come out and learn, volunteer.
Thank you, Auntie. See you, guys.
Trustee Souza.
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, Auntie Luana, Kathy. Sounds to me like everyone should have recused themselves from the vote. You guys know everybody on this board. Yeah, aloha. See you guys next week. Always good to see you guys. Mahalo.
You know what? I need to apologize to you, because you got rejected on your tickets.
You know?
Right? I'm still sorry. I never reached your, your name, so.
No, we went through the process, just like everyone else. And it's a legit process, and that's, it got vetted, it got denied. Either way, I will be there. You cannot hold me back from being on stage, okay?
That's for sure. I saw your name come in on the musicians list, so I said, I don't feel too bad.
Yeah, give them backstage pass, so it doesn't matter. Mahalo, guys, thank you.
And Trustee Souza, you're playing?
Yes, yes, sir.
Four, four? Lena Alapovault from Kauai. So she has three numbers, yeah, Dan, represent Kauai.
She has three numbers this year. She, first time, Auntie, she entering, Connie, yeah? Yeah, so.
We look forward to.
Sick of that, yeah, yeah, so.
Continue performing.
Yeah, right on. Mahalo.
Any other trustees? Trustee Akaka?
Yeah, I, I think I'm in strong support of this sponsorship that we're doing, as we've done from a legacy standpoint. And I would like to see, going forward, that it be even more robust in our participation and our presence, so that we don't have to worry about if we can attend or not and be a part of it, as, you know, it's, it's stated as this is the biggest event we have statewide in the year, and that this is a globally recognized Hawaiian cultural treasure, showcasing the depth, beauty, and vitality of Hawaiian traditions. And I would like the opportunity for administration and our board to have it where our, our board members, like other events that we sponsor, that we are, have provided the opportunity
Sure.
to attend. I, I, I feel that of all the events that we sponsor, this should be the one that we should, it, it be prioritized so that we can attend it.
Great. Well, with that being said, you know, we are gonna have another special event that week, and that's the Blasine, and the opening of our Hawaii Island Office of Hawaiian Affairs office in, in Hilo. So that'll be on Friday. Whoever can attend is welcome to attend. And then we have our, like Auntie Hulu said, the traditional Merry Monarch parade that will full force be walking in with whoever is there, our staff, their families, our children, to really demonstrate to our beneficiaries and the Hilo, and in some cases, the global community that comes to Hilo during this festival, what the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is all about. So it'll be, it'll be great.
I believe it's livestreamed around the world as well, so people don't have to just be physically there at the parade, but can watch them online.
Yeah, Auntie Luana, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, speaking about international, at this time, right now, for the Huike, we having the Mexicans practice on the stage next door. So they already came in from Mexico, and they're practicing right now.
Fantastic. Well, I'll share just one real, real quick story, because we had a nice laugh about Trustee Souza's tickets being, being denied. You know, for years, when I was growing up in Hilo in the eighties and the nineties, my dad used to go to Merry Monarch every single year. And my dad was close with Auntie Dadi. And apparently, there was a list that Auntie Dadi had, and this was a list of people that every year, no matter what, tickets were sent to them. My dad was on that list. So when I was growing up in high school, in the nineties, my dad would always go to Merry Monarch and sat in the seats that he was given. In twenty sixteen, my dad passed away in January, while the tickets had already been mailed. So the tickets arrived, and Maria, my wife, and I went to the Merry Monarch with my dad's tickets. Then the next year, in twenty seventeen, the tickets didn't arrive. And that was because it was a reminder to me, not only that, you know, my dad had passed, but also that our generation of our revered kupuna are moving on. And the tickets were never for me, they were for my dad. And when I asked Auntie Luana about that particular, you know, I guess, list, she said that this was a list that my mom had, and she gave to me. And even when my mom passed, I continued to send these certain individuals on that list every year, these two tickets, two tickets, two tickets. And so mahalo, you know, Auntie Luana, for, for all of that. And just like Trustee Souza, and I know Chair Emerita Lindsay, I now apply myself on the first of December for tickets. I get my four tickets for my wife and my two daughters, and we'll be there on Thursday night to watch our Miss Aloha Hula competition, so, yeah.
Let me clarify why your dad got tickets. She, she gave tickets to the VIP tickets, and they were for those who helped her, to help her get the start at Merry Monarch and continue to help. As an example, Lindsay Pola from Hawaiian Air, he was there to help us. Brick, you know that, yeah? Lindsay was so helpful to the Merry Monarch. So people like that. Plus, every single doctor she went to had a VIP ticket, so. Yeah, those tickets, we hardly change unless, you know, this year, we had two priests that passed on, so those tickets are going to, if, I think I told you, Kai, that the Maori Queen will be here.
Yes.
If you wanted to attend, so, you know, they'll be getting those extra tickets too. So just wanted to clarify, we don't give tickets away to just anybody. It's the VIP list that Ma gave me that I continue to help.
And, and as a reminder, if you want to get tickets to Merry Monarch, you gotta have them postmarked on December first. And if you want to beat everyone else, you mail them at the Honolulu Airport Post Office. Because even though you mail in Hilo, it goes to Honolulu, gets processed, and goes back to Hilo. So if you mail at the Honolulu Airport on December first, guarantee Auntie Luana will get them the next day.
Maybe we can have it where the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Administration has it in place where they do that for us trustees?
No comment. Trustees, anything else? If not Auntie Luana, Kathy, we really, really appreciate you coming. And how about we vote this out? Let's get a real call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye, all the way.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye, with much aloha.
Trustee Alapa.
It's a big yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Kanalu.
Trustee Waehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
All right, the motion passes. Congratulations, Auntie Luana and Kathy. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, our next item, we will jump to item three, D one. And this will be now recognizing the Investments and Land Committee. And Chair Souza. This will also require a waiver. Not the first one, okay? Thanks for correcting me, okay?
Yes, not the first one. So Chair Souza, you recognize? All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to, for the reappointment of Leilani Kupahu Marino Kahuanu as a non-OHA LLC manager for Heile Aloha LLC for a one-year term from April first, twenty twenty-five to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second. Wait, March, sorry? Oh, it says one year, but it's for a three-year, I'm sorry. Can you amend that?
Yes, I will. It, it's, it's in the, okay, it was in the, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Type one.
Mr. Chair, for me.
Go ahead and read the motion.
Yep. Move to, for the reappointment of Leilani Kupahu Marino Kahuanu as a non-OHA LLC manager for Heile Aloha LLC for a three-year term from April first, twenty twenty-five to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second. Can we get a second? What? We're gonna have to read that bug again. Gotta be twenty twenty-eight.
Oh, yes, yes. You're correct. Thank you, Council. All right. Mr. Chair, if I may, have a third opportunity to.
Time to charm, Chair Souza.
Thank you, sir. Oh, right on. Thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for the reappointment of Leilani Kupahu Marino Kahuanu, a non-OHA Limited LLC manager for Heile Aloha LLC for a three-year term from April first, twenty twenty-five to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second. Okay, Chair Waehe, seconds. Trustees, discussion. Any testifiers? No discussion? Vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye, aye, sorry.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Waehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli. You have nine yes votes.
Okay, Trust, uh, Chair Souza, next item.
Uh, Mr. Chair, for the next item, I would like to request to, for approval to waive the following ILM Committee matters to be directly considered by the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees Bylaws, Article eight, Section M, Committee on Investment and Land Management, Action Item twenty-five dash zero seven, Approval of OHA Hawaii Real Estate Strategic Plan.
Second. Okay, second by trustee Waehe. Trustees, discussion?
Uh, yes. Yes, I know, I know this is regarding the waiver, and I just wanted to state for the record, as I have with the previous waivers, that I would prefer that it be in committee and have that multi-layered vetting process and so forth. But it seems that this is waived because this is of the essence, timing is of the essence here.
The, really, the primary reason why it's waived is because of the state auditor and their inquiry into our real estate strategic plan. So in reality, this action item requires two readings. So we're gonna have to do it again after our letter is transmitted to the state auditor. But at least this will affirm that the board is taking action on the strategic plan. It does exist. We can send it to the auditor as part of our, what, April thirtieth deadline response? Normally, we would, to your point, we would not have done this, but because that was such a sensitive issue in the twenty twenty-three audit, this is the follow-up to that.
Okay, so then we're gonna be bringing it back to the board again?
Yes.
Or talking about it further?
Yes.
Committee?
Board.
Board?
Because it requires two readings since its policy.
Thank you.
Anything else on the waiver, trustees? Question?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye, aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Waehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes on the waiver.
Yeah, Chair. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for the approval of OHA Hawaii Real Estate Strategic Plan as set forth in Attachment A. Second by trustee Waehe. Trustees, discussion. And, and we also have our real estate consultant, Paul Quintilliani, on, who, working together with Linda Schatz, worked on this strategic plan. And it was the, you know, the request of the board that we do that. And it earned, ended up to be good timing that we have this document. And it is an OHA-branded real estate strategic plan. It builds off of the previous work that had been done in the tactical strategic plans earlier in the fall. And so I'll defer to Paul. If you'd like to say a few words, Paul, on this, and then we'll open up to discussion. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, and aloha, everybody. Tough act to follow Auntie and the Merry Monarch, but we'll do our best. So you, many of you have already seen variations of the strategic plan that is in the action item and also in the, and in the attachment. It's been a long process that we started this in July of last year. And we went through a vetting process where we looked at current practices, we tried to establish guiding principles. We looked to industry to come up with best practices, and then distilled it down to a set of core guiding principles. And then from those guiding principles into specific strategies for investment lands and for legacy lands. I think that the documents themselves are relatively self-explanatory, and I know you've been going long today. So rather than give a big presentation today, I think I'll just open it up if you guys have questions on any of the components, rather than take more of your time today.
Yeah, now, I'll also add too, I mean, this strategic plan is a very high-level plan. The subsequent plans that Paul and his team will be working on will be the business slash operational plan, followed by really a tactical down in the weeds on how we execute the strategic plan. So these are, this is really the overarching goals and objectives and purpose for OHA's land assets, of which we have investment lands, we have legacy lands, potential development lands, currently have income generating lands. We have lands that are fallow, not generating any revenue. So that's what this is. It also pulls some of the best previously board-approved policies and concepts from other guidance and governance documents that this now supersedes those previous documents. So Paul and Linda really did a good job in, in going through all of those documents, so that we're really looking at the one overarching strategic document that I think meets the auditor's, at least first part of his recommendations. Trustees, any discussion? Yes, trustee Akina.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo what you've said. I was very pleased with the presentation that Paul and Linda gave in a private presentation to myself, and I'm sure he did with other trustees. I like the fact that the plan is comprehensive and allows us to take short-term action while keeping a long-range vision. I also liked very much the fact that Paul expressed that he and Linda are familiar with the recommendations of the state auditor regarding our developments or attempts to develop at Kaka'akumakai, and that those are being taken into consideration in his consultation of administration. Thank you.
And again, if we adopt this today, we can include it in our report. But we will also be on for final adoption at the next board meeting. So we have another two weeks to look at it, review, ask questions. And if someone desires, make an amendment, if, if that's what they wish to do. I guess hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. Oh, do you have any testifiers on this?
There's no testifiers on this item.
Let's, uh, let's vote.
Trustee Ahuna. I'll come back to trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Waehe.
Yes.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
And trustee Ahuna. You have eight yes votes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Thank you, Paul. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay. Go right to community concerns?
Yeah, we can come back to the second session.
Okay, yeah. You know what? Trustees, if it's okay, let's, let's jump to item five. This is Community Concerns and Celebrations. Um, I, I would assume we have some community members that'd like to say a few words, and we welcome them. Thank you for your patience. And please, please join us. Who do you have first?
Our first speaker is Napua.
Hi, Napua.
Aloha. It's nice to see you folks again. Thank you so much for having me here. I submitted to your votes, and I think you have it on your computer, a proclamation declaration. Last month, when I came, I gave a petition. a proclamation declaration. Um, last month, when I came, I gave a petition for redress of grievances. I had a meeting with, um, uh, as a referral from, thank you, Trustee Huldu Lindsay, for referring me to our CEO, Stacy, which we had a meeting, and, um, it went well. And as a follow-up, we had a res- a draft resolution, and, um, this is a proclamation to clarify what spirit of aloha is in declaring. Um, we haven't had, I haven't submitted, um, a public filing in the Bureau of Conveyances, so we did this the other day, just so that we can have clarification. Part of declar- their declaration is we're declaring to build relations with OHA and, uh, the, uh, state legislature, et cetera, in regards to, um, first and foremost, the identity of our Hawaiian as Hawaiian nationals. And so that's the beginning of where we're, what we're looking at currently. And, um, I submitted this to you because this is gonna be in addition to, um, the conversation or meeting that I'm told that you're gonna have with, uh, B, BAE Leadership Committee. And looking forward to having another meeting again. So, just for your information, um.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We have one more testifier.
Our next speaker is Jermaine Myers.
Aloha, Chair.
Aloha, Jermaine.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Souza, and honorable trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm an OHA beneficiary for beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. I'm also a Nanakuli Hawaiian homestead lessee. Mahalo for the opportunity to express my community concerns. HCR one-nine-two. I need to again express my concerns about HCR one-nine-two. As I stated earlier, administration submitted written testimony in strong support of HCR one-nine-two HD-one version from OHA to the House Committee on Tourism on April one. What it didn't share was that the BAE committee met on April two, the very next day. At no time did administration make an effort on April two to clarify to trustees that it submitted written testimony in strong support to the House Committee on Tourism the day prior. Then again, on April fifteen, administration submitted written testimony in support of HD-two version, which was the day before the BAE committee yesterday, that was agendized for yesterday. Thank you to the trustee, Trustee Akaka and Trustee Akina for clarifying that this is a gaming bill. Gaming includes casinos, et cetera. My concern is that this bill exploits Native Hawaiians. To say gaming is a way to take Native Hawaiians out of poverty is exploiting our people. The working group in the HD-two version give OHA one seat at the table, but the working group will consist of minimum fourteen members. One member will be an individual having experience in social services and behavior addictions. I say minimum because the resolution states other parties having relevant experience and expertise as invited by the co-chairperson of the working group. Currently, when our people want to gamble, they have to buy an airfare ticket to go to Las Vegas. They also have to request vacation time off from work to be able to go to Las Vegas. If gambling is legalized in Hawaii, our people can take their paycheck on Friday and then drive to a casino on Oahu. Casinos are being proposed for Aloha Stadium and Kakaako to play a game of Lucky Chance to see if they can win the house. I'm concerned that OHA has never spoken to our Native Hawaiian community about their life experiences with family members addicted to gambling and the destruction on their childhood and adult relations with their gambling-addicted family members. Again, what, where's the message? What's the message we are giving to our keiki regarding our culture? Are we workers, farmers, protectors of Aina and Yonvai? Or are we people that take chances with the game of luck called gambling? The prosecuting attorney, um, Steve Arm, is trying to make the, the point that in addition to how it affects our keiki, that we are already short on HPD officers. We have, we have five, almost five hundred vacant positions right now. The last count, couple years ago, was four hundred and fifty vacant seats. At our neighborhood board meeting Tuesday, when we asked why HPD wasn't able to provide, um, police officers to man six stoplights that were not working, that were not operable, they stated because they had short staff. So, how are we gonna have more HPD officers to man gaming and the sex trafficking and addictions and, and domestic violence that comes from it? In the gaming bills that have been going through the legislature, OHA should go and read the testimony of the Department of Health. Department of Health cited, I, I could stop counting at a hundred, reports about how gambling addiction, how it affects teenagers, keiki, but also the family structure. They provided comments and notes to all of these reports on how it affects our health in these negative ways. So, not only that OHA should be coming to our community, our Native Hawaiian community, and asking us for our life experiences, but also to go to the Department of Health and see the reports that they've been citing whenever gaming is coming up for passing legislature. So, I'm just really concerned that our voices are not being heard. Kaua Poo, God bless all of you.
Thank you, Jermaine. Anyone else on community concerns?
If someone else signed up.
So, questions? We're done with that. We have executive session next.
Oh, are we?
When, yeah, well, we still have the-
Couple.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah. Uh, my suggestion is we do our Kapuana update, and then we do the executive session, okay? Kapuana.
Mahalo, Chair. Um, I'm gonna keep this brief. It's been a, a long day. And so, um, my first shareout, um, is just an update on a recent, uh, site visit to the Pacific Missile Range, um, on Kauai at the Mana, uh, Plains. And basically, that the purpose of our visit is, uh, OHA, myself, Kuike, Kamakea, Ohalo, and Kamakana Ferreira have been in ongoing exploratory discussions with Shipti on how best to reinter our EVKupuna that right now Shipti has in basically boxes in their offices. And, um, this is decades-old, um, EV that need to be, um, honorably and respectfully interred. And so, we have been, um, looking for different options on what that might look like in terms of interment. And so, we were invited to, um, PMRF. They do have a, uh, interment crypt there. And so, we were invited by, um, Kaulana Mossman, who is a lineal descendant of that area, but also their, their community planning liaison and their archaeologist, um, Alex Haslett. So, you have my report in front of you. Um, just very briefly, you know, the, the dunes at Nohili are very well-known, um, as burial grounds of our kupuna. Um, in fact, it was known as the leaping or departing place of many souls. And so, it's very historically and culturally significant to our people. Um, because there's a lot of coastal erosion, um, that's happening, there's quite a bit of work that's being done at, um, PMRF to ensure that there is protection and preservation of our EVKupuna occurring. Um, on page three of my report, you do see a couple of pictures that I provided. One is a preservation in place. That's a picture on the left with, um, the sandbags and the, the box that are covering EV. And then also roped-off areas that once EV is, um, determined that they are there, um, they bring in the lineal descendants, um, to help make a decision on whether they should preserve in place or they should be interred. Um, I do also have a picture showing the, the crypt. Um, they, they named it the Lua, uh, Kupapau or Nohili Crypt. And so, they have many remains that have already been interred there. They now, um, do interment only during the summer solstice. Um, so, they open it up once a year in, at night and inter any EV that have been found throughout the year. And so, we had a really great discussion on the, how the design came about, the cost of, of the, the crypt construction. And so, um, we will be taking that information and further discussing with Shipti, um, potentially starting with the island of Kauai on, um, how we may work with Ahomoku and the burial councils and figuring out how we can start to inter our EVKupuna that are just waiting for decades to be, um, be re-intered. So, that was, um, and, and they're also doing dune reconstruction and restoration. So, again, the EV, um, can remain in place as much as possible. Okay, and secondly, I wanted to just share that I, oh, call him my-
Trustee Akaka.
Mahalo, um, mahalo for this, uh, sharing, and I, um, seeing the collaboration with, uh, Shipti and the Ko'i Mayor and so forth. Uh, two things, I wanted to get the Manao over, our Kauai, uh, trustee on what his, um, experience has been with, uh, uh, with the community has, uh, shared with him. And then, uh, a- after that, um, talk about, um, I, seeing the photos, it gives us an idea of, uh, the, the land space and what we're working with, but I'm interested to know, um, at what point is it, let's say, safe being that it's Pacific Missile, is that like federal, is this part state, is this part county, and how, um, the combination of how all that, that relationship is working to go forward with this.
Yeah, well, well, for me, first of all, I think it's very important that we're always talking to, uh, PMRF. It's, it's very important that we can continue to communicate. You know, like, like, like all missile bases, uh, uh, or, or army bases, you know, I, I, I'm not here to be against veterans. I have veterans in my family, I have people in the military. But what I am here for, for is the concerns. The con- some of my concerns is, hey, man, look what they're doing to our land, and what are they doing to make sure, to alleviate all these problems moving forward? And, um, um, another thing is Axis. You know, that west side of, of, of the, of the island is, 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 you know, Polihale is, is, is one of the, the places where, you know, the soul leaves, you know? And that, and, and those dunes are very, very important. So, you know, I mean, working with the military is very hard, so it's very important that we continue, you know, I stress just to continue working with them and, um, I, I, you know, I'm just a voice, you know? Whenever I hear something, you know, whatever we can do to continue. The one thing I am, I am concerned with is our bombing. The bombing of our island outside of, 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 uh, Ko- Kauai. And, um, the reason why is because, I mean, no matter what I say, or no matter what I do, it, it still happens. And, and, and with that, um, I, I, I don't know how to stop it or, uh, how, how to clean it up. I, I don't know how we can help all of that stuff, but I know a person who does know a lot about that, and, and she's on our team already, is Lena Alale, so I'm, I'm very happy to have her aboard, uh, you know, our staff with us, but those are my concerns, and, um, you know, the next thing I worry about is almauna, koke, you know, make sure, you know, not, not too many big sites up there, you know? But we have, we have some radar up there. But those are my concerns.
Mahalo. Okay, um, Kapuana, Omidyar?
One, one more question of, of this space that we're speaking of, uh, would you say that it consists of a Native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands?
You know, I don't want to misspeak. Let me find out for you, and I, I'll report back.
Mahalo.
Fair enough.
Were you asking what kind of lands? What, were you saying what kind of lands there?
They were, uh, considered a Native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom, because oftentimes when it's state lands, that's what it is, and I think it gives us more, um, credibility to be able to represent and advocate.
Yeah, uh, you know, you could be right with the, uh, it, it's, it's our lands. Um, I see, I saw some protests, that's why, before, and no one did anything to stop them from protesting. But yes, I, 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 I've heard of, I mean, I would like to know. Thank you for asking the question.
That's a good question. Uh, what I do know is that the United States Navy does lease lands from the state of Hawaii at the Pacific Missile Range facility, and one of those leases is like many of the other leases across the state, to include Pohacolo and Makua Valley, that all expire around twenty twenty-nine. So, the Navy is doing its EIS and its preparatory work on, on, on that, and, um, it's probably specifically Polihale. Um, I know that's a state, state park, um. But with that being said, I mean, I think it's a combination of federal land, leased land from the state, um, state land, to your point, that federal land also at one time could have been ceded land.
Yeah, so-
Highly likely was.
You mentioning that too, it, it reminds me of the PIG that exists, and maybe this would fall under that in terms of what the leases look like.
Definitely. I guess you could look at like, um, PMRF as like, um, Makua Valley, right, where you have, um, about eighty percent of the lands are federal lands that fall under the United States government, and there's a portion of it, I don't know, twenty-five percent or so, that is state of Hawaii land leased to the United States Army.
Yeah.
At some point, it was all-
Yeah, for me, I'm always-
Kingdom land, ceded land.
Yeah, I'm always, um, interested to hear of lineal descendants or kupuna of that specific area to be able to share on the genesis of those lands, so that it helps aid us in the conversation and kukaku ka to advocate properly in terms of what stewardship looks like going forward.
Yeah, and Trustee Akaka, I highly agree with you as the trustee of, of Kauai and Ni- Ni'ao that the lineals descendants should be, uh, called to help, um, you know, with those, the, those EV issues that they, that, that they have at PMRF. I really believe that those lineal descendants should be called. They shouldn't be taking care of it by themselves.
Yeah, I, I, um, PMRF is a really great example because they do include the lineal descendants. They're actually, they have one of them on staff, which is Kaulana Mossman, um, who is the community planning liaison. But then they also have Anakala Kunane, um, Aipoalani, so he's always brought in as, um, for consultation. So, I think they do a good job. Okay, moving on, I'm, I wanted to, um, share with the board that I will be going on a trip, um, from May first through May thirteenth, and this is in coordination with my, um, Omidyar program. So, as a fellow, one of the opportunities that is funded by the, the fellowship program is an impact project, and my impact project is to do research on successful indigenous models of decolonization. So, I will be, um, going to Palau, um, from May first through the seventh, and I will be, uh, researching, um, Palau's, um, sovereign nation status and how they have diplomatic relations, a cooperative, um, agreement with the US. Um, basically, the US is responsible for their, um, military defense. And, um, then I will be moving on to Aotearoa, and I'll be there from the eighth through the thirteenth, and I'll be learning about the Kingitanga. So, this is the Maori king movement, and basically, this movement has united the Maori tribes under a signal of sovereign, and they operate outside of the New Zealand government. So, um, my hope is to be able to learn, um, from their learnings, the things that they, they feel that they've done that has worked well in terms of creating their, their sovereignty and, um, and things that they, we should be avoiding. So, I'll have a report, um, certainly for the Omidyar, um, fellowship, uh, program, but certainly I would love to come back and share my findings, um, with this board.
Trustee Akaka.
Mahalo for sharing on that. I think that, um, that is a key Pacific relationship for us to keep intact with the Kingitanga, and I, it is, um, it was shared with me that the Kingitanga, when we, um, I had asked, uh, uh, Nida about us, uh, reconvening what we had started with the Talanua to be, uh, during, uh, Festpac, is that, um, part of what they're doing, uh, currently is to meet with their different, uh, groups throughout the, um, Aotearoa, so that they can, I would imagine, stay on the pulse on the needs and concerns and, um, have them, uh, become more familiar with their current, uh, queenie. And so, so, I'm really- And so, so I'm really interested in learning about, more about the discussions regard regarding, uh, decolonization. And how we can ko- ko-ko' one another there, because that, for me, that was one of the biggest takeaways with Festpac and the Uciania and the signing. Is for us to, uh, support one another with our governance and what advocacy looks like. So for instance, when we have things regarding our Native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands with even our parata share. That's where our indigenous sisters and brothers can step in, um, formally, I would say formally. And when things are happening currently, and I would like to see if we can provide some kind of written official document. Supporting our, um, our Maori, uh, cousins across the way when it comes to the, um, Te Te Riti and with what is up in the paremata over there and how that keeps. Keeps coming up in the questioning of the rights of of what their kupuna had put into place. I think that as a Hawaiian people, that's where we can back them up. And that's unfortunately, they keep facing that. In terms of their, um, their education, their economic development, the many things that we are looking at with our strategic plan and our very mission. They have that same plight. And unfortunately, those that are. I would say not kamaaina or not lineal descendants of those lands are questioning questioning their very existence. And I don't think it's right. So I would like us to take a formal stance to support them. And if that time while you were there, maybe you can broach that conversation with the Kini Tonga.
Sure. Thank you. Um, yes, I'm I'm very excited. Um, and although I'm not going in my, um, official capacity from OHA. Um, I will be taking vacation time to to, um, do this trip. I'm very excited and, um, I I would love to come back and share what I learned. Okay, and then lastly.
Thanks, um. Congratulations, by the way, to be selected. And this will culminate that journey for you with the graduation coming up. Shortly thereafter, your return. May twentieth, fantastic. I hope that you're able to go on this trip, um, and leave the OHA kuliana behind. Um, because it's really important for you to get, um, everything you can get out of this this trip. And so is there a designee? That is acting in your behalf so that. I would assume it's the CEO, but I just want to ask.
It is. It it would be the the CEO. But I was planning on still being available.
You should focus on that. You know, I mean, that would be my suggestion. I mean, we, I think we can handle and K'ao is extremely capable and competent. And I think it's important for you to 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 do that.
Are you gonna invite anybody to your graduation?
Well, you, yeah, the chair is invited. I'm, kalomai, only one person can come in. So mahalo for for being, um, the board, uh, representative the first time. I was very, very proud to have you join me. And this time around, it's gonna be Chair, um, Chire.
You 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 missed a deadline. You missed a deadline.
Even even that has a a defined number, sorry.
Okay, moving on.
I have one more update.
One more, yes, upcoming events.
No, 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 um, oh. Well, upcoming events and then also, um, our signing bonus. Okay, so we do have two upcoming events, the Gabi Pahinui, Wa Manalo, Kanikapila. We will have our BSAs there. And then, um, so that's gonna be Saturday, April nineteenth. And then we have the Mele Manaka, three-day community event. On Thursday, April twenty-fourth. And that's in Hilo. We will not have our our staff there. We are all hands on deck. For our Merry Monarch activities as well as, um, our office opening. So, um, and then I'm just gonna wrap up my updates with, um, I provided you folks, uh, an update on our recruitment efforts, um, specifically our signing bonus program. And I, I provided a breakout of the numbers. So it's very encouraging. Um, there's a snapshot that you can see our our hard-to-fill, um, positions. Just in one week's time, our key accomplishments have been, um, basically, we have doubled, um, in some respects. Um, our grants division has seen a surge, um, in applications for both our grants manager and our grants officer positions. I'm happy to say that we are starting interviews next week. And our publics, uh, public policy impact has been doubling of applications. And, um, there's been sustained interest in the other, um, positions. So, good news. We're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I'd I'd make one note on the upcoming event. We do have, uh, Chair Galutera is gonna go represent, um, OHA at the Gabi Pahinui Wa Manalo Kanikapila. And we have a certificate for all the trustees to sign so you can. Present that to the.
I think everybody signed them, yeah?
Did we all sign it? Okay, I never signed. I signed it? When I signed it? Okay, you'll make that to happen. Okay, all right, great. Um, thank you, uh, um, for giving us update on the signing bonus. And, um, also mahalo to our, um, HR team. That staffed our, uh, job fair at the Capitol, as well as the job fair at the convention center and sat there all day. Uh, on a Saturday or for for many, many hours, Cory and his team. So I think that coupled with this this bonus, um, and innovative. Out-of-the-box thinking also for all of our internal OHA employees. Don't forget the five hundred dollar referral bonus. For successful, uh, applicants. So these are, in a way, I don't know, I don't think you get that. Okay, yes, you are included. Okay, thank you for that update. We have executive session next. Uh, we could also, second, okay. Yeah, I guess we'll wait until announcements. That'll be the last thing. So we have executive session, we have announcements. And then we also have, um, several of us going to the Capitol this afternoon. So we need to, uh, get through this relatively quickly. So let's take a quick recess and set the room up for executive session. Oh, we can do that. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Or let's go back in. Move, second, let's take a vote.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa. Oh, sorry, yeah. Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe. We have eight yes votes. We will be moving into executive session.
Okay, thanks.
Don't move, because there's a certificate coming around to sign.